I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any visitor who requests permission to address the board on the loan agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on. New business, adoption of the Delphi Community School Corporation COVID-19 Back-to-School Guidelines. Mr. Roth, would you like to walk us through this a little bit, then we'll have to get a motion and then we'll have a discussion?
Okay. Before we do anything else, I would like to thank and acknowledge the people that were part of the committee that worked on this. And the administrators spent hours on this, Allison, Anne Marie, Bill, Alyssa, Jake, and Kevin especially. But two other people I'd really like to single out is Kay, Kay Ross, who's with us. Met with the local category of health and really helped us work on the health section of this, the social distancing part, parts A and B. So she has done a lot of work, spent a lot of hours. And then I have to acknowledge Carly. Carly has worked hard to edit this, even yet at, like I say, 11:30 today, she was adding and editing, and she has just done a fantastic job. But as far as parents, we, I had Alicia Hubbard, Erin Jubel, Brandy Farr, Jen Hudson, Jenna Fosnot, Lindsay Penn, Rena Smith, and Ryan Dyer. And so I appreciate them serving. Jessica Miller, Jill Routh, and Nicole Nelson were the teachers represented on it. And then the input I got from the board, so it's been, it's been very, very productive, and I got a lot of feedback, a lot of good feedback. So you can, you can see the outline that it exists that made sense. Several schools used this format, and it really seemed to be something that we thought would work well for us, and so we incorporated it and then customized it for Delphi. The note on the front page, the reentry is language suggested by Nick as a, more or less as a disclaimer. So you can, you can look at that, and I, is, Nick, are you on? Yes, I see you there. So if you, once I get through, if you have any, anything you want to acknowledge, that would be appreciated. And then if you will notice, on the, the very last, very last page, there is a date of adoption, and, and one thing I am asking for is that you allow the administration specifically through me to modify the document as needed, depending on what we get from the state, the local, state health department, Department of Ed, Governor's Office, legal, and so on. And that all those things will be documented in this document change law. So that's why Carly and I thought it was really important to try to get as much done as we could today, so that we could, we could not have to make so many changes. So I, I, you've seen it, I think you, most of you have gone over it. So Nick, do you have anything you want to add at this point?
Oh, I think, Dan, I indicated to you that this is a document that should be written in pencil, not pen, right? So anticipate that as new information comes in, and if, hopefully the numbers improve, and, and this can be implemented just as designed, but it, it's, it's going to be a moving target throughout the rest of the summer and into the fall.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're looking for a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the Delphi School Corporation COVID-19 Back-to-School Guidelines with provision that will allow this document to be modified by our administration as needed, and to keep the log and bring it back to us once that's been done.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Floor is open for discussion. Anyone have any questions or comments?
I would, I would mention too, that Carly found a way that the document that's on the website is a live document. So any changes we make are reflected immediately in that document. So this is something that we have to continue to go back and repost. It, it will change as the document changes. So, so parents and students and patrons can keep up with it at all times.
I'll just comment, this generally, your firm represents a lot of school corporations. I think Dan and the administrative team have done a good job of keeping everybody in the community involved and seeking input. I think you're going to get a lot more buy-in when you have the input that you guys have got.
And this closely follows what the state is suggesting that's on their website, correct? As, I mean, I looked at what was on the state, it looked quite similar, so we're not out on our own on this.
No, no, I think the biggest issue we have is social distancing. You know, the, that, that is the biggest challenge, I think, the classroom space, and, and I don't think there's any way around it. It's interesting to me, I think I put in here that the, that American Pediatric Decavity that said that six feet probably is not the be-all, the end-all, that three to four feet is adequate, and I guess I put a lot of credence in what pediatric doctors think about this. But yes, for the most part, it reflects the plan. Theirs was 40 pages.
Try not to go there.
Yeah, thank you. One concern or question, I guess I have, is regarding turning all their dates supplied in the backpack. I think that can get, I need for some kids, and was that the only books they carry now, that, when they're used to sometimes to be at their book bag considering stuff, and trying to carry those around all day to the test numbers? And they're ready to have maybe a half-day where they could go to their locker and, you know, carry all their morning stuff and get their stuff for the afternoon, maybe that must be a little better solution.
What, what do you guys think?
What page, what page?
I was going to say, what page? Because I thought we had discussed, I mean, we discussed it, that it was allow them to go at their one time to swap out the...
It, I read the one online, and I haven't read through this one that I got today, but it was on...
Under the exchange of resources to and from school.
They just mentioned the visiting the locker room twice a day, once to begin school and once to end the school, and they had to carry all their stuff for the whole day. You know, so you could start and end it in the same day.
We did discuss that. Anne Marie, are you online? And, and Jake is gone.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, we did discuss that, and, and I, I don't know that, and we can make that change. How do, how do you feel about that?
I don't know, it's going to cause, at the high school level, our locker bays are such a congested area, that's a problem. I don't really know how many books the students will need, since most of everything they need is online. The concerns I'm hearing from staff, it's more about carrying vaping devices and things like that than the weight of the books. But, I mean, we could let them go there during lunch, except for trying to limit the movement during lunchtime.
I guess I'd answer you by saying, I think we'll begin, we'll begin with this, and as, as they see what develops at the middle school to, at high school, that if we see that as a need, that we'll try to accommodate that by, by the adjustments that we'll make. It is, she just mentioned vaping, and one, one really interesting aspect of that is the state just changed the law on that. Help me out here, Anne Marie, the, now that's, or having tobacco, smoking is what, a classified misdemeanor?
Yeah, it's a C misdemeanor, which makes it equivalent to alcohol.
And, and it's, I think the first offense is a $400 fine. So it's, that has really changed from, from an enforcement point of view. So it can come as a real shock to some parents if their child gets cited for tobacco possession or smoking or vaping, and has to pay $40 for that violation.
And I did send that through email to all the parents and students when that law came out, so they do have an email form.
Right. Good suggestion. That is something we talked about.
One, one question I have about the cleaning protocol, where it talks about, in particular about cleaning the buses, who's going to be responsible for cleaning the buses?
Right.
The drivers?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no, I, there's no one else.
Well, that's what I, I, you know, I, with all this cleaning and sanitizing and everything, are we going to have to increase our custodial staff, or are we going to be able to go as normal, or?
Well, we're going to, we're going to start with what we have. One, one thing we've talked about is that we currently have a day shift and an evening shift, and what we may do is, is within, within these three buildings especially, to have one of the evening people split their time, come in earlier, maybe around the start of lunch, and help with that. That's going to be, I think, our, our biggest problem, is, is making sure we can get the cafeteria cleaned in between sessions, and also that the trash gets taken out, because there's going to be more trash. Because of the way the cafeteria is going to bundle the food and package the food, there, there's going to be a large increase in the amount of trash, so.
I'm just concerned how the bus routes take kindly to having to clean their buses, that.
Well, it should not, it shouldn't be, they, they're going to have to wipe them down. They, we, we have products that they can literally just spray on the, on the seats and hard surfaces that could be left, and won't have to be wiped down.
So they can basically just walk through?
Walk through and spray it. That's, that's the plan. I think there was some concern about, for example, when a bus route's done at the end of the day, and then you, you need an athletic bus, there's, that's just going to be one more time crunch and inconvenience, because it's just something we're going to have to do. Good question.
Something else, which, not necessarily maybe this is a discussion here, we may just need a work session or something, but, you know, adopting policy is one thing, of course, you know, like Chris was saying, these things, it's going to do, you know, we, we think about, are we, do we have a separate dedicated room for the sick kids that come in? We have to keep them separate from the rest of the population, and the nurses may see fit. You know, that's going to pull them away from their area, because I wouldn't think that we'd want everybody in the same area as everybody else, so a different dedicated room, so to speak. They're going to need, like, help with that, you know, an aide, I don't know if they have to be a medical aide, maybe, you know, whatever. Not that now's the time to do that, because this is adopted policy. No different than buses, you know, that's a concern that's been asked in the public. What are you going to do? You bring kids in, you crowd them, you put them back on the bus, like Camden. We used to just drop them off straight there at the school before, so maybe some of that thought process needs to be looked at, how we reduce that within. Yeah, it might cost a few more dollars, maybe it's an extra route. I know some schools charge that.
We've already done that. Ross has already, the kids that were dropped at the elementary and now, before they went to Camden, we've eliminated that, they're going to go directly to Camden.
And kind of the same way that where they used to hold them, they're just going to bring, pull through and keep the rotation down as possible?
And we're, one of the big battles we'll fight is people wanting to drop their kids off, so that's, that's a real concern. Ironically, Kay and I had a discussion this morning about the fact that we, we will likely need to hire an aide for her to help with, with all this, because if she gets called to a different location, then we need somebody to be able to fill in for her and just help her out with, at keeping records. Tim had asked about keeping, you know, we're going to have a lot of records to keep in terms of kids that are on quarantine or, or whatever. But you, Kay, can you address the isolation areas, or what we know of right now?
Well, I mean, it's what Bill and I have talked about in our school, is if we use part of the front, part of the workroom that comes in from the office, if I had my main desk out there, then I can check kids in there and decide whether they need to go to the back, where there's actually a door between them. And if they do, and we dismiss them, we will dismiss them from there and out our back door. I feel like that's better than bringing them back through. That's kind of what we're thinking about in our building. I didn't, I don't know what Anne Marie has thought about, or maybe discussed, as far as the middle school and high school.
I think the middle, I think the middle school has an empty office, that, as I understand, in the, in their main area, that they're planning on using, and, and it's probably, we're probably going to have to have the high school use the same space, because they don't really have, don't really have...
So they'll go to the nurse first, and then they'll be put back there?
I'm sorry?
They'll go to the nurse first?
Yeah.
And then they'll...
Then they have to move to that area.
I see.
Are we talking about students now that come to school and they're showing?
With symptoms, yeah.
Like fever or something like that?
Right, right.
And then are we going to be required to take them home? Or the parents are going to have to come and get them?
Parents will have to come and get them.
Which, that's our normal protocol.
Right.
But people do come sick, and some are sick.
Well, one thing I would encourage, and I understand what you're saying, my concern is this, is that if we isolate those close to our administration, our staff, and you do have cases that are exposed, then we're going to start potentially losing staff and things like that, where if we think that there is a separate area that you might be able to go that's away from that, you know, I'm just off my head thinking, right? Like, I call it the green room. You know, is that a place that could be utilized better for the nurse's station, so to speak? Yeah, we might spend some money to modify some thing. More area, more open, so if somebody does come in, it's not confined. Same goes with here at the middle school, high school, where she's at, I think the room may be, what is it, right across that, Mr. Barnhart occupies? Is that something that, you know, that a room dedicated that's close there, that keeps it away from the rest of the population walking? I, I don't know. I mean, I'm just, things that kind of concern me a little bit, and that my company actually has addressed to us what we need to be doing too, so. Just a thought process as we go through. Like you said, this thing is fluid, right? I mean, like I had conversations with some other board members from other schools here the last three weeks, already, already open, yeah, you know, we are going to open, but it's going to be flexible, we've got to figure out what's going to be of a word. Is everything going to be right? No, but nothing ever is. And so we've got to do what we can do the best to minimize it, to get started, and then adjust as we go from there, like this document says, so.
Do we have an official range of temperature, body temperature, that's going to be?
100, 100's our normal cutoff to send them home anyway. We have heard 100.4 for COVID, but we're not going to lessen our standard for this.
So if it's over 100?
Right.
Okay.
I have a question, there's, there's like nine symptoms to look for, I mean, so what if someone just has two, that's nine symptoms? A headache and a sore throat, and a boy, does that mean that they, and they didn't get a test? Says here they have to look in the doctor's notes?
Or, or they get a negative test.
Or 10 days off, straight? With this, that the headache and sore throat?
And you know what? I mean, the health department would support us in just even one of those symptoms, but that's, they'll all learn to come to us with one of those symptoms.
Especially I would, if I had a big test that day.
I mean, it's, it's going to be a tough haul, and I got to tell you, there's going to be parents upset with this, if we're trying to be really careful. You guys are going to hear it, I'm sure.
Well, it's the same with the teachers and employees, you know? If they just got a headache and a sore throat, if they have to be off 10 days since the last symptom, or get a doctor's note.
Or go get a negative test. And from what the health department told us, you could go to Frankfurt, was the closest one, and it was free at this time, at the high school, I believe. And then if they get a negative test, come back. That's what we want, of course.
Nice question. Does, do we, does our clinic have the test?
We don't have any in Carroll County. Not even the health department.
Do you know the lag time?
They just opened a precinct, not yet as well.
Do you know the lag time to taking the test, like at Frankfurt?
They said the one at Frankfurt was 24 hours, but there's new ones coming out that are 15 minutes. I don't know if we have them in Indiana, but I know they're coming.
We saw them on Wednesday, yeah, at the elementary?
On Wednesday.
On Wednesday, don't they?
Yeah.
Is it possible for them to receive the test?
Well, we're saying we don't, we don't have.
We don't care.
Not in Carroll County. I mean, maybe, maybe that's coming, might be a nice thing for the trust to consider to put some to Carroll County.
I don't, I don't know if we want people coming in.
No, this is for E.
For employees or something like that, that'd be different, but, Kay, if somebody is, hops out or 10 days out, do they still need to go to the doctor, have a thing to get back in, or they're out 10 days, and then they're just automatically okay to come back if they don't have these signs?
I guess what bothers me, I mean, what if they have symptoms for seven days, and then, you know, do we need 10 more days? I mean, I need the doctor's help with that kind of thing.
Okay.
And I think we'll learn more as we go along.
As we go on.
It was, on our football practices, I saw a special note saying here, "athletes, athletes, have they..."
Didn't we have a...
Have they started their football practices yet? Have they?
Or they weren't asked during the football? Kids, yeah. I think it's dangerous for, to, for athletes to do this while they're exercising. Pretty much as follows the IHSA guidelines that they put out. I, I will tell you that the biggest risk we face, I believe, is not, are not the kids, it's the adults. So if, if we start getting adults in the system that are, that are positive or quarantined in any kind of numbers, it's going to be very, very difficult for us to be able to stay up, and that's the biggest risk we face. We have some really old people we have, we don't want to name, so we have to be careful.
I don't want to feature, so not for... Yeah.
Everybody, yeah. Back to maybe Mike's question a little bit, I talked to another board member, like I said, at other school, on there, and maybe I missed it here, as far as the sports go, they're making their athletes' parents sign a waiver of liability. Are we doing that too?
Far as I know.
Okay, that's fine.
It's in the...
It's okay.
Let me, let me touch on the remote learning. The remote, remote learning is really difficult. It poses all kinds of problems. It's something the state wants is, whether you call it remote, virtual, whatever, but it, it poses all kinds of challenges for us. And I told, I told the principals and teachers, first thing is that we cannot ask teachers to do double duty. We cannot ask them to teach a full day in a classroom and then also be expected to teach some kind of an electronic version of their course all the time. So we, that's what we're trying to sort out. And, and once we adopt the policy, we're going to try to open registration, Scott and, and Bill have graciously been working on it, and find out what parents plan to do. Because, for example, if we have, I talked to the, or we talked to the principal at Michigan City, 42% of their students want to be on virtual education, which is, you know, incredible. But, so, who knows how many we're going to have that want to offer that? And if they do, is that going to reduce our class sizes that we had? We utilize teachers to teach, and then, you know, a, a more of an e-learning version of a course, so that we can hang on to students. So we just, we just need to know, once, once this is in place, what the plans of parents are. But we are offering, and it's going to be, financially, it's going to be very interesting, we're offering a separate version of accredited classes that students can take online, and they can take, they can take a full schedule, K through 12. But, but we, we are going to discourage that as much as we can, you know, by restricting, they have to have great internet, they have to have parent supervision to be able to be successful, but, but we feel like, based on what the state's saying, we have to offer. So, so that's in there, and it's all going to be, that's all going to play out in the next couple, couple of weeks, to see how that's all going to work itself out.
Is there, is there a minimum number?
Do we have to have to offer that? Say you only get five kids?
No, we can, we can do it individually. So it, so the cost for it, for example, we have three students at the high school that we know we want to be in that program because of their needs, and, and so that's going to work out. But we, I, we just don't know what, what parents are going to do.
Well, if we go allocating salaries to your position for three students, that's not very productive.
Well, no, I, what we would out, or have a teacher do, for example, would be, say a fourth grade teacher, if you have several kids that, that parents elect not to have in school, we would hope, hopefully, that fourth grade teacher could teach an online course from Delphi, using the Delphi grid. And, and so we would keep them in school, we would keep them, they would, we would still get our ADM funding fully and, and that kind of thing. But we, again, we just don't know where they're at. What, what we're afraid of is that some will, will choose options that take them completely out of our system, and that, that's, that's a real concern. Allison, did you want to say something?
Well, Steve, what I was going to say, those three that we know are at the high school are like actually special ed, and we're using Ed Menon to supplement the curriculum for that program, because we currently don't have a curriculum for that classroom. So that's the confirmed three that we know of, and I know there's probably at least one medically fragile student that will need to decide if that's the route they want to go for the school year, or if they're wanting to, how they're wanting to do things.
Do we have administrative access to that software, so we can see where they are?
Yeah, well, actually, we'll be able to coordinate efforts with that outfit, if that's the route we go. Yeah, it's not just, we give them the code, and they go, it's, we work with them.
And we are, we already have a teacher who's somewhat volunteered to monitor that for us, to, to keep track, so that, yeah, four months, or three weeks into it, we find out they haven't started any classes. So that's, that's our goal, is to monitor, is closely.
So on the remote learning, if a child chooses to do that, and if I rewrite semesters of her...
For a high school semester.
High school, right. So they will not be participating in extracurricular activities in ours, would be, that would be our guidelines, because if they're not wanting to be here because of COVID, then they would be here for... because of COVID, then they could be here for the population of that, I mean...
Okay, now, do you want me to answer that for the Delphi position, the IHSA position, the Department of Ed position, or the lawyer's position?
Well, again, as long as, as long as we have guidelines in...
We have it in there.
That state, right? And that, it may be fluid, it may be changing, you know, I'm okay taking heat from people and communities that was maybe upset about something, as long as we're doing it for the right reason, and that's why.
Nick and I had, I don't know if it was yesterday or today, we had this discussion, and, and what he is advising their client, what their firm is advising their clients is that if a student can't come to school to be around other students in a classroom, it isn't very logical that they should be around the rest of the class.
Because we may have also, we said some years ago about homeschool kids, that they couldn't participate either, it's kind of the same way.
Go ahead, Nick.
No, I'm just, Dan, gonna share, yeah, I totally agree, that's the advice we've been giving, it makes no logical sense, on the one hand, to say I'm gonna stay home because of social distancing and then come play tackle football, that's all.
Thank you.
Summary that we just started? Are we gonna have to print out, or do we have to email and write it, or maybe, can they listen them down or something like that?
We certainly can. The only, the only fear is if it gets, yeah, if it gets modded by, but we'll talk to Leslie about, yeah. Let me check my email.
Yes? May I ask a question or two? I only just got to start reading this right now, so, just the very basics, students have a choice, they can either come to school here on campus, or they can take virtual classes, is that's true? And at registration is when they're going to acknowledge their choices. When's registration?
As soon as we can get it in place.
Oh, we don't know yet, okay.
So it's gonna be online?
Well, we knew what it was, as per the calendar, but we're gonna try to move it forward so we can get this information.
Okay, so...
Hopefully, within the next, within the week, we hope to have that out there.
And to add to, the other option is, my child is not coming back to school, is not gonna be at Delphi School.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. And so, is it that you expect registration online only?
Well, we can't, because of certain circumstances, but we are gonna try to limit as much and encourage as many parents as possible to do it online.
So will somebody let me know when that begins and I can get it in the paper?
Yes.
On our website, on our Facebook page, you know?
We'll have something before you, before you record next week's...
Because we want to help you out, we wanna help the kids out, you know, that kind of thing. Thank you.
Hearing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the COVID-19 Back-to-School Guidelines. All in favor, say aye please?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
First student today is to...
If there's nothing else, for motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion is second for adjournment, all in favor, say aye please?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned, thank everyone for coming.
See you next Monday.
All right, thanks, Nick.